Chair Jean Enright.
Present.
Vice Chair Wayne Richards.
Present.
Secretary Treasurer DeAndre Poole.
Present.
Commissioner Blair Sicklin.
Here.
Commissioner Verissa La Dash.
Present.
Executive Director Michael Meekins.
Present.
Port Counsel John Pumera.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Please, as all stand for the pendulum, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Please take your seats. Mr. Meekins, are there any additions, deletions, or reorganization of our agenda?
Madam Chair, there are none.
Thank you. Yeah, I need to have, we're going to talk, look at the approval of the agenda. Do we have any arrangements, no arrangements, no reorganization of the agenda, anything?
None.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, you need a motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just want to make a comment before I go further. I would like to thank Ms. Jackie. I see that you have, if you notice your, your, your agenda and your book, how she went back and she added minutes from the last meeting and all the motions, and I really commend you. You've done an outstanding job and I really appreciate it. So it's not like, she made it very easy and simple for us. Thank you very much. Any presentations, Mr. Meekins? Any announcements?
None.
Okay. Consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, do you deal with the approval of minutes?
Uh, yes, they did approve.
We approved the agenda, not the minutes.
I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes, please. I need a motion?
I move approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero, with Mr. Sicklin saying aye also. Consent agenda? Do we have any concerns, or if you would like to pull anything, any questions on the consent agenda? I need a motion to approve.
Move approval?
Thank you. Commissioner Richards?
My second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. District report. Mr. Meekins, welcome. This is your first meeting. Welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here. To start off the first report, we'll give you a little bit of overview on operations. Cargo volumes year-to-date are running about 3% under budget, but really that's just the timing in the commodities such as asphalt and molasses. You'll see that the TEU volumes are 3% up over month for month last year, and that overall from last year, we're up almost 6% in TEU totals altogether. Cruise volumes for Margaritaville are still looking strong for the spring and early summer. I'd like to get into now the master plan, give you a quick update. What you'll see on your screens is a schedule. We are committed to moving this project forward. As you can see, there are some significant dates out there. The most is May 31st. We are going to have public comment, take it back out to the public after the last set of public comments, and then on June 15th, have it back to the board for your approval. The goal is to keep this scheduled, to keep it on track, so we'll keep pushing on that. Mike and Ron are working really hard on that. Next update is on the PID. So on the PID, back in May 2020, it was submitted, and it was submitted with a price tag of $26 million. Through inflation and through COVID, our internal pricing came back from HDR, and it came back higher than that number, obviously. So at that point, we contacted Merad, we stopped the process, we asked for an extension, and what we have been busy doing is rescoping that project into sections. So basically, we're setting up as a bid alternance, so that this way we can put it back out on the street, and we can do it a project that we can afford. At the end of the day, that's the most prudent thing to do at this point. Merad did let us know that we're not the only port in this situation. There are other ports that are in similar situation with inflation and COVID. So we have a schedule for that as well. Should be on the slide. My apologies, we do not. We're staying on the schedule. We may not need the extension at all. At this point in time, we're still moving forward, and it's just for, just in case something else pops up, but right now, we don't expect it to. Next slide will be on the R and R projects. This is just a quick overview of the R and R projects, where we stand as it relates to the $5 million that's allocated. Right now, we have a total of 1.2 that's already committed, and another 3.5 that'll be pending board action in the future. So the next topic is mooring fields. The city of Rivera Beach is now looking at a project which will add about 143 mooring fields, 43 of those to go to the north of Peanut Island and 100 to the south. Right now, the city of Palm Beach has objected to the project. They have sought legal counsel, and they are moving forward to see what they can do to stop the project. We are sitting on the sidelines at this point, watching what's happening between the cities, and figuring out what we'll do for them. Our biggest concern with this going forward is by adding this many more moorings out there, it substantially increases the chances of a vessel breaking loose at some point and sinking within our channel or our basin. Either one of those two things were to happen, and it would stop shipping altogether. So we would want to make sure that if this project does go forward, we have some assurances from the city that there's an immediate response plan in place to deal with anything like this. For those who have been here for a while, you know at times, we've ended up with sailboats in our slips out here, and it takes time to get them out of the way, get them cleared, and then get our vessels back to normal movement. And the next project we have is our intern program. Very happy to say that a lot of our tenants have stepped up to the plate upon the chair's request last month, and Berth One, South Florida Materials, Tropical Shipping, Ozinga, Margaritaville at Sea have all stepped up, and they have all contributed or taking on interns, which is a great thing for us. So we're very happy about that. And Yadi did a fantastic job with encouraging them. We'll get to the, next slide is the, we attended the Florida Ports Council Spring Board Meeting. The major topics discussed was that the bulk of the funds that are being available this year are going to FDOT and not towards ports. That's not saying that we're not getting any money, we're just not getting an increase that we would have liked. Basically, the chair has said, come back next year, and you'll see more money at that time period. So we're going to oblige that, kind of move forward in that realm. I've also been tasked to work with the Port of Miami and the Port of Tampa to work on a couple of challenges that are occurring with ports today. They include some fees that were being charged from third parties and items like that. I will continue to move forward with that, try to make some progress. Next slide.
Much slower and slower.
Yep. Our attended the, we attended the AAPA Legislative Summit in Washington DC, March 26th through 29th. Chair Enright and I met with Governor Rick Scott in his office, a very productive meeting. He was very nice enough to stop his schedule and speak with us. We're hoping that that meeting bears some financial fruit later on, but very productive, and we're moving forward. The legislative session, I found to be very interesting. They did make changes with AAPA, not sure that I'm a real good big fan at this point. Hopefully, they'll make some more changes that'll be better for what they were doing towards the past. And the last slide I have for you is the other scheduled events. FDOT Fuel Resiliency and Supply Chain Workshop in Tampa, I'll be attending that. I really didn't have a choice. They told me I was going, so I'm going. DC flying in the 15th, 16th up in Washington DC, I will not be attending that. I've already spoke with Mike Rubin, he's fine with that. AAP Port Administration Management Conference is 6/6 through 6/7 at San Pedro, California, and right now, nobody is slated to attend that. That is my report. Any questions?
Questions, Commissioner?
No.
How many applicants from the internship program have we had so far?
Can I reach over to Yadi?
Good evening, Commissioners. So, so far, we've only had three, but I have emailed every high school principal in the county. Didn't know there were that many high school principals. We were at a career fair today at Everglades Preparatory in Pahokee. Last week, I was in Palm Beach Gardens High School Career Fair. I've contacted all the trade schools, FAU, I posted it in their portal. So we have been reaching out. It was also on the news over the weekend on Channel 5. So we're doing our job and trying to get the word out. What I'm being told is that some of the students are waiting for the letter of recommendation, and so maybe that's why they haven't applied yet.
And how long, thank you for your efforts, and how long will the programs stay open for applicants?
So we have two weeks. May 5th is the, is when applications close.
Okay.
So if we need to extend that, we of course will, maybe an extra week, but as of right now, it's May 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Richards?
No, that was by.
Okay.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any emails?
No, we're fine. Thank you. Engineer report?
Good evening, Commissioners. Port Engineer's been working with cooperation of the Deputy Director of Finance and Capital Programs, and we've developed a project management tracking system. You'll see some of that attached to the back of my engineer's report. This will give you a good look at all the engineering projects that are in the works. The program report will be part of the documents that be attached to the engineer's report each month. This month, we're focusing on the Kimley Horn projects, but we've included a couple of other projects not in the page, we'll have. We believe this will give the board members a complete and concise look at all the projects that are going on within the engineering department. I'll continue to brief you on certain projects that are of particular concern and scope as it relates to the engineer's report. As always, I remain available for detailed discussion on any projects that you see of particular interest. I'll be glad to talk to you about it. Just give me a call, you know where to find me. Emergency dredging. We have a, an item coming before the board today to go out for emergency dredging in Slip 1. We've had some shoaling in Slip 1 that has had some negative effect on the tropical shipping operations. It's in an area of Berth 6, and we'll be addressing that specific shoal. Upon completion of that shoal removal, which does interfere with the HOPE-class vessels, we'll work with Finance Department, allocate funding under the renewal and replacement budget to perform additional dredging as required in the port's purse. This is a little bit of a little strange area that's developed that we didn't expect, but we'll be able to take care of it quickly. Renewal replacement budget. The engineering department continues to work to bring priority R and R projects to the board for bidding and approval. These projects are an important part of maintaining our port in the best possible conditions to support our tenants and users today and in the future. As the port is aware, some realignment of goals and priorities have been taking place in the Port of Palm Beach, and with that realignment, your port engineer will now be working closely with your new Deputy Director of Finance and Capital Projects, primarily on capital projects. So you'll see me bringing those to, to the board basically every month. And that's all.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Government Affairs Report. I did not receive one from Mr. Pinskey.
So Mr. Pinskey did send me an email with a couple of comments. The most important being is that HB 979, it was a, it was one item that was set to go before the House and Senate, and it involved dredging in ports, and it was very restrictive in its nature. While we were up in Tallahassee, I had met with the representative as well as others from other ports, and now that bill is dead, so it is not moving forward and will not have an impact on us. The Port of Palm Beach requests for a million dollars in additional land purchase. That is still going forward. It's in the Senate-proposed budget, but is not in the House-proposed budget. And just to let you know as well, that Palm Beach County has a $250,000 request in for improvements to Peanut Island in a separate proposed budget, but it is not in the House budget as well. And that was basically his update.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Commissioner Report. We're going to start with Mrs. La Dash.
So the BDB Board Meeting will be on the 28th, so I look forward to providing an update to everyone next month regarding what we discuss on the 28th. And yeah, I also will be working to inform, inform individuals in various commissions about our internship opportunities, so perhaps together, we can all try to recruit some more applicants.
Okay. Anything else? That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Poole?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, the TPA met, of course, at 30 Thursday, and there were several items that the committee dealt with. I'll just go quickly through my list. Mayor Gray Weiss announced that the county would be sending a letter to the Coast Guard to ask them to assist in some way. The county feels that the bridge openings are unnecessary during rush hour traffic, so I don't exactly know what that will look like, but the county is sending a letter to the Coast Guard to get their assistance with addressing the bridge opening issue. Also, FDOT is, will soon begin a two-year improvement plan along the Okeechobee Highway Corridor. And for two years, much of Okeechobee will be closed in, in some areas. At some points, there'll be one lane closing during the work period, so the goal is to enhance Okeechobee by adding bike lanes, make it more walkable, as well as other enhancements. And the bike lanes, that's of course something that is going on all across the Palm Beach County right now. In addition to that, we passed two, we passed two big motions today. One was to adopt an amendment to, to the five-year funding program, the five-year tip funding program, and two of the additions addressed enhanced rail crossing at Forest Hill Boulevard and rail on I-95 to improve safety there, and the second dealt with improvements or continued work on Palm Beach Lakes and I-95 on and off ramps. So that work is slated to begin in 2027, and that passed unanimously. Now, the second motion, of course, that TPA spent a great deal of time discussing, it has to do with the TPA adopting new targets for federally required performance measures of bridge, pavement, and system performance. The concern that some on the committee had, they felt that FDOT was setting the safety standards in Palm Beach County too low, and so they wanted much higher safety standards. But again, the two options that we had to either go along and do our own specific targets, which would have required the TPA to then utilize money for certain projects, rather than the other option that staff gave was to adopt the state performance measures, and that state funding would, of course, be, give the TPA the flexibility to address areas that needed improvement with regard to transportation. So it passed, and then we also passed a resolution, well, that was the resolution, to adopt federal required bridge and system performance measures. So what we're going to do in the future is to have a workshop with FDOT and other parties to discuss how we could improve those safety measures, and part of the justification FDOT gave had to do with this being a new, relatively new program. There's not enough data to measure what safety should be in five years when they're taking a new look at sort of these new improvement enhancements. So we're going to meet with them at a meeting to be scheduled sometime in the future to discuss, to look at these safety measures, bridges, roads, pavements, et cetera. But one of the things that did come out of the meeting is that we have a very high scoring record in terms of safety here in Palm Beach County, but it could always be better. But the state of Florida certainly looks at Palm Beach County as a state that doesn't necessarily, a county that doesn't necessarily need all of the additional funding that, that we ask for sometimes. Does it make sense?
Okay.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Good report. Thank you very much. I just want to add, I don't know if most of you know this, but they're doing work on the Blue Heron Bridge.
Yeah, what are they doing?
And one side is only open, and let me tell you, it takes you 30 minutes to go past. And don't go on a Friday or a weekend. You will be lined up all the way to the ocean and all the way to the railroad track that you cannot go across. So there's only one name, and it will be closed until October. Before that, we were going all the way up to PGA Boulevard and then coming down. So if you plan to go across the Singer Island, be ready to wait.
Commissioner, I'm, I'm sorry, I left off two other items.
Okay, go on, I'm sorry.
I want to thank Commissioner Richards for joining me and, and taking his time not to leave me when we were at the bicycle ride-along that we did with the TPA last month. You know, he's an expert rider, and, and Yeremy was there, of course, you know, she was doing her thing, riding as well. I didn't know they were riders, by the way, but they certainly inspired me to, to, to do some more work, to be ready for next year. And the second thing I want to say, of course, is I also attended the, the TPA had a ride-along, I call it a ride-along, where we, it was, it was interesting to see, you know, sometimes we don't really, we take for granted those individuals who may utilize the Palm Trans system and the Tri-Rail system. And I know, you know, we had an opportunity to catch Tri-Rail from West Palm to Delray, then we walked to the Palm Trans headquarters there, and then we had a presentation by David Deek, who's Director of Tri-Rail, and also Colin Forbes, Clinton Forbes, excuse me, who's Director of Palm Trans. And so ridership is up. One of the things I'm working on is making sure that the buses and the trains are clean, and Palm Trans will be investing in electric buses. Will be phased in over several years. Not all the buses, but there'll be a certain number of buses that will be elected to, to help cut down on costs and reduce the carbon footprint. But thank you, Madam Chair, for, for letting me get that in.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Richards? I knew you, you know how to ride.
Well, this would be, this would be much shorter, but what Commissioner Poole neglected to share, and thank you, that was very enjoyable, that after we did the very short bike ride with TPA, Ivory on Yeremy said, this ride was too short. We should ride our bikes up to the Port of Palm Beach and back. So we, we did that, and it's somewhat dangerous riding in Palm Beach County, and bike lanes are truly needed. So we made it safely to and from, so Yeremy, that was a lot of fun. Thank you. It's a lot of fun. That's all.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, business. I win.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to give you a quick update on the Teeters Monarch shipping matters. Last week, I sent you a memorandum to update you, and there's been a lot of things going on even since that time. So on April 11th, you know, the port obtained an order from the State Court Judge requiring Teeters and Monarch, and now their compliance officers, their President William Teeters II, Vice President, Secretary Sherri Black, and others to provide certain information that's, it's in a document called a fact information sheet. That fact information sheet has a dozen very detailed items, everything from bank, loan accounts, canceled checks, deeds, leases, mortgages, bills of sales, evidence of any sales, purchases, gifts, motor vehicle and vessel document, financial statements, assets, liabilities. It's very detailed. And the, what else, I'll call defendants, Monarch and Teeters were, have not been responsive up to now. The judge, I believe, is losing his patience. He's entered an order to show cause, and so we, we have the, the order now. By May 1st, all of the information I just outlined is due. And just as a point of reminder, just in terms of the judgment we have, which is for about $750,000, it's accruing interest since September of 2022 at a rate of 4.25% per annum, and it does not include the attorney's fees and costs, which will be the last chapter in this case. Unfortunately, because there's not been cooperation, it's taken more time, and more fees and costs have been incurred, but they, I can assure you, they will be recovered from Teeters and Monarch. On April 18th, we delivered to the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office our writ of execution. There's already been some initial discussions between port staff and the sheriff's office. This is regarding all of the personal property of Teeters and Monarch that was left at the port. There is a meeting that I believe will be scheduled shortly with the sheriff's office and port staff to just work out the, the mechanics of this. This will probably be an online sale of the equipment, and so that will be moving forward. It'll be a judicial foreclosure sale, so the port doesn't own the equipment. We own the money that will come from the sale of the equipment. Also, on, on April 18th, and again, I kind of alluded to this at the last meeting, because there has been some gamesmanship involved by defendants, we filed a motion in a complaint, it's called a complaint in supplementary proceedings, suing the Teeters and Monarch insiders and the transferees. So these are those family members that are involved in these, what we believe are fraudulent transactions. So, for example, we have located five residential properties in Palm Beach County with a total appraised value of 1.33 million dollars. We located a property in Martin County with an appraised market value of $565,000. We also located two mortgages, totaling $322,000 that Monarch had owned and transferred for no money to insiders, Bill Teeters, Cindy Teeters, and Sherri Black, for no value. Remarkably, this occurred just 41 days after our lawsuit was filed. So we're also, are in the process of filing list pendants on all the properties I just mentioned, so they're not going anywhere until we obtain our rulings. A hearing is set for May 2nd. In order to have the court issue notices to appear against the insiders of the defendants that I just mentioned, we will be taking their depositions in aid of execution as well.
Any questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Richards?
First of all, great progress, John. Let's talk about this, this sale that will be conducted by the sheriff. Do you believe it to be a lump sum, or will it be individual assets that will be sold?
Yeah. In fact, Mr. Meekins and I discussed that today. You want to go ahead?
We did. And I also spoke to the sheriff's department, myself and Rick Placeras, oh, probably a couple hours ago. And the initial comments were two things. Number one, the board had made a request that the tenants get first crack at the bidding process. Unfortunately, that would have been possible with the vessel, because we ended up being the only bidder when it came time to bid, therefore, we owned it, we could do that. With this, these properties, these items, we are not. They went from the judge to the sheriff. We have no ownership in them whatsoever. We just get the monetary, as John said. They're looking at an online auction where anybody could participate, even out in California. We started talking basically quick checks and balances of what we wanted. We wanted to make sure that if somebody did bid, they bid successfully, that they had the timeline on getting the items off the property, that they couldn't sit there. That would definitely impact what we can do going forward. And then we started to talk about the structure of how this will occur when he put some restrictions on us. um, he put some restrictions on us as far as there are still items inside of containers and he can't sell those, so we're gonna have to deal with those. There are gonna be some things we're gonna have to deal with that'll take us, I'm hoping, I threw out a ballpark timeline of about thirty days. And then at that point, we should be able from our end of it to move forward. But we are scheduled to meet with them tomorrow at eleven o'clock and that'll give us a lot more information as we move forward.
We're all through to my question.
One more, and there, there are a few things that we, the port, need to do too to get ready
Yes.
uh, for that. Uh, that's gonna take a little bit of time. You know, we have all the containers which we're gonna sell, but some of those containers have containers in them of substances that we have to dispose of.
But my specific question was, will this, if you know, you may not be aware this way, will this be a lump sale, a, a, a one lot or will it be individual items?
So tomorrow I'll have that answer, I'll be able to give you that answer to everyone, uh, shortly following that meeting.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Also, I would like for, uh, you to make sure that tenants are aware of the items that are up for sale, so then they will have an opportunity and they will be getting their funds together to maybe, to purchase some items, so they are all informed. Also, the individuals who are thinking about taking over the, the Teeter site to make sure that they are aware, because they might be interested.
Well, and again, we'll put it out to everybody so that everybody's aware of it. Um, with the help of the contractor out there, I think he's here today. Uh, we made a, a complete, really complete listing of all the items that are there. And we'll just see if we can get that answer for you as far as that, but we will get it out to the tenants and everything else as soon as we have a date that's available. Some of the requirements require us to, some of the are obviously double stacked and they can't be. Everything's gotta be down on the ground so that, uh, they can go through it.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Any questions? Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Very good report. I two, engineered.
Commissioners, item I two is seeking approval of an additional work order for the PID consulting contract. And this will be to, um, to our H team at HDR. HDR had originally had a work order number two in the amount of nine hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred ten dollars for the PIDP project. The design build criteria package provided for the basis, uh, of the RFP to secure the PID contractors, the design build contractors. The design concept has been advanced by HDR resulting in, the original concept resulted in leaseholder impacts to merchants and, and areas north of our main entrance road. We've met with Tropical Shipping, Tropical Shipping brought in Carbaveloctides, their contractor, to look at something that was more favorable to their exact operations. And that change has taken away the problems with the overhead lines and leaseholder impacts to merchants and the properties next to them, moved it south partially into, uh, Tropical's project, uh, project areas. What we're looking for is approval of an additional work order for the design by criteria package to, uh, HDR in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars. This is a, uh, fifty percent mayor ad, twenty-five percent FDOT and twenty-five percent port. So the actual out-of-pocket for the port will be forty thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. And this is well in line with the expected overall consulting contract that would be required to bring this project forward. So we're looking for a motion to approve work order number three to HDR in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Move approval for discussion.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this, this is in addition to the nine seventy-six, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So why would, why do you say it's, it's within what it was, what is expected to be expected?
The, the Brooks Act governs these projects and looks at a typical, uh, consulting costs of about six percent and we're well under the six percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, five zero, thank you.
The next item, the subject is rail rehabilitation, design, technical specification, bidding and construction management phase services. The rail rehabilitation modernization project will upgrade rail components outside of the PID project, primarily west of Avenue E. And all this design will be consistent with the PIDP rail project, along with some realignment of existing rail. The design preparation and technical specifications were previously approved by the board and prepared by Kimley Horn. Uh, this additional work, the staff's now recommending the rail rehabilitation modernization project be separated from the PID project and as such require the completion of the design and technical specifications by the Kimley Horn Trans Systems team. Staff recommends approval of the work order in amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. This project is in our adopted capital budget and it is fifty-fifty FDOT funded.
Move approval.
Second.
I just want to ask you, so we, we're paying roughly seventy-one, seventy-two thousand dollars, right? Because it's fifty.
That's correct.
Okay.
Half of the one forty-three is out of our pocket.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, five zero. Thank you, Commissioner Sieglen.
Okay, item J two is requesting authorization to issue the request for proposal for the rail modernization, modernization project. It's all, it's all just been described. The total estimated cost for the rail rehabilitation modernization project is three million, six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. This RFP will solicit a contractor to install the rail with, which, uh, we've already bought all the rail materials for this project. The estimated cost of the rail modernization project is three hundred six, three million, six hundred eighty-five thousand. It's included in the adopted, uh, capital budget with fifty-fifty FDOT grant funding. So requesting authorization reporting here to issue a request for proposal for rail rehabilitation modernization project.
Any questions? Questions?
Uh, no, I motion approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor of commissioners, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, five zero, thank you. J three?
Okay, item J three is requesting engineering support for the modernization of Port of Palm Beach elevators. The elevators throughout the MOC building require both upgrades and state of Florida requires safety modifications. Staff received approval to issue an RFP for the modernization of the elevators at the April twenty-two, uh, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two meeting. Only one responsive bid was received and that bid far exceeded the port's budget. In addition, responsive bidder did not provide pricing for all aspects of the modernization as requested in the proposal. This work order will be to EC Fanell and is to prepare a more comprehensive technical specification and to provide for management oversight services during installation, contract negotiation and permitting support. EC Fanell's preliminary estimate to complete the elevator modernization project is one point six million. Staff is recommending approval of the work order, uh, to EC Fanell for developing the technical specification and engineering support for the non-modernization of the MOC elevators in the amount of one hundred forty-four thousand, sixty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Mister, um, I have a question. One point six five is a lot of money.
How many elevators are there?
That's a lot of money. I, I just need you to kind of like, uh, guide us through this, um, one point six five. Then I need to know about all the money, I guess. I, I just need you to start from the beginning and, and guide us through the one point six five. First, tell us about where all the money's gonna come from, because we did it nationally in two thousand twenty-two. So just refresh all of our memory to tell us where this money's coming from. And then after you do that, guide us through the one point six five, how are we gonna spend it on elevators?
This project is.
Just take us back.
This project is funded in the adopted twenty twenty-three renewal.
We know, we know.
And, uh,
Are we paying the whole one?
Estimated cost is more in the one point two range.
Okay. My question is with the one point six five, however, um, all of the funds, are they matched to what?
No. There is no matching for these funds. This is out of our.
Since it's our money, then we really gonna have to look at this a little bit more closely, closely. Okay, so EC Fanell gave us a contract of what, you said one point six, one point two?
We, we originally had a budget of one point six five million dollars. They're now estimating this project cost to be one point two to one point four.
Uh, I'm not an elevator person, but I need a little bit more guidance on this because that's a lot of money with elevators. And I'm not saying that, um, they're not going to do a good job, I just want a little bit more explanation on the one point, um, two five.
Okay, if I may, these elevators,
Yes, go on.
These elevators are over twenty years old.
We know.
There are safety requirements required now by the state of Florida to be done by the end of the year, which are providing for safer operation of elevators. A lot of this work will incorporate items in the elevator to make them safer. We'll be going from geared operation to gearless operation, which is a method of how the elevators are lifted up and down. And, um, and again, there's, there's a lot of components to be repaired. Basically, what we will see out of this project is you'll still see the box. Everything will look brand new. Lights will be brand new. The interiors will be brand new, that is some of the upgrades. But all the guts inside will be brand new. And that will provide for theoretically another twenty years of operation of our elevators. But these have not been worked on in twenty-two years.
And this will go out to bid, am I not correct?
Yes.
That's the bottom line. J, they'll go out to bid. It, it's a lot, I agree with you, but.
I know, but.
We'll put it out there and see what comes back.
I don't want to get stuck again too, because I cry.
Commissioners, just to give you an idea, the CBP elevator going downstairs for the passengers has been out for almost six weeks.
Yeah.
They've replaced board after board after board, kept coming back. Rick can probably tell you, I don't even know how many times, but it took six weeks and re, they had to actually rebuild the boards because they don't make them anymore.
Yeah, you gotta do it.
So they're in such shape that really they just need the complete overhaul and that's why the cost is so high.
And this is for all of the elevators in the building?
Yes. And Chair Enright, I've been stuck in that elevator too and I almost cried.
Is there a motion?
I don't like enclosed spaces.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero, thank you very much. Next, go on.
The next item is berth one shore power separation engineering services. Currently, the berth one shore power is fed through the Port of Palm Beach FPL meter, which, which results in, in our staff being required to do an extrapolation of data to try to determine how much was berth one, how much was, was us. I can tell you that if we charge them too much, they cry. If we don't charge them enough, they don't say a word. This, this project will separate the shore power into a separate transformer, separate meter, separate breakers, et cetera, so that all shore power, not only existing, but new shore power that is being added to berth one with the new docks will all go through this new meter. And this work order is to EC Fanell, the Shore Power Services, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars.
Any questions, commissioners?
Comment?
Yes, go on.
I will be voting, I will be voting in J four and J five upon consultation with the port staff and this attorney, there's no conflict.
Okay.
Approval of, of, uh, agenda item J four.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, five zero, thank you.
Item J five. Authorization to issue a request for proposal for separation of shore power. So once they design the shore power, we'll need to go out for an RFP. This is requesting your permission to do it. Uh, right now, they're slightly funded, uh, under the contingency line item of the FY twenty twenty-three R and R budget.
Questions, commissioners?
I move approval of J five.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, commissioners, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Motion carries, five zero, thank you. J six?
J six is requesting approval from the board to issue a request for proposals for dredging in slip one. Right now, you're seeing on the board, uh, soundings of slip one. The primary area concern right now is in the lower right-hand side on berth six. That is affecting the hope class vessels, et cetera. We have some areas in there that are approaching minus twenty-nine, minus thirty. The idea will be to come in and dredge that area, only that area. This project should come in less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'll, we'll dredge that area or pull the shallow shoal into deeper areas. And, um, and, and that should put us back in, in, in good terms. We will be coming later next year probably to do dredging of the entire slip, but this project for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars maximum will allow us to take care of the, the issue that's bothering berth six docking.
Any questions, commissioners? Discussion?
Question? What depth are we seeking in that slip? What uniform depth?
Our depth, our, our project depth is minus thirty-three, we're allowed to have two-foot over dredge. So when we dredge, we try to dredge to minus thirty-five to, to give us that over dredge. That provides for some area, uh, to shoal before we affect our project.
So you're suggesting they'll probably simply pull it into the deeper areas?
That'll be the most likely way this will be handled is to pull it into the deeper areas. And then when we come back after next year's budget, we will probably look at dredging the entire slip and in that time, that material will be placed over at Pinot Noir.
Move approval. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, five zero. While you're up here, I had, uh, discussed with Mr. Minkins, uh, not emergency dredging, but dredging, uh, so many times a year, so we don't get into, uh, the situation where it's like every time we're in an emergency, have to have it done, that we just monitor it at all times to make sure, and we can like have a schedule, especially because we're now coming in hurricane seasons. We talked about that.
So there, there are two issues here. One, the slips are ours, so that's a separate dredging operation, we'll always own that. Next year, it may cost us just over a million dollars to actually do the slips. The good thing about the slips is you don't have to do them that often. Uh, you know, you're ten, fifteen years before you have to go through that process. Uh, but we need to have a continual budget in the future so that we know that when that's coming. On the federal channel side, it really becomes a Washington DC budget issue. Uh, it's not really the Army Corps of Engineers, it's not a lack of response. It is quite clearly that they only budgeted them in October, but they may not actually get their real budget until the middle of the year. And then at that point, every port across even river ports have to be dredged and they all have to be given priority. And so the system itself is dysfunctional and they know that. So there is talk about down the road in the future changing the budget process to a three-year budget process. That would allow for some flexibility down the road, which would not have ports constantly in a chokehold of trying to get dredging. In our case, you know, we would like to do maintenance dredging every year, but it almost turns out that we do emergency dredging because we can never stay ahead of it. And that's be the end goal. So we'll work with EFSTED and other groups to continue to push that and continue to push Washington to make a change on that. But it's all budget related. We can jump up and down at the Army Corps all day long, it's really out of their hands.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick addition to that, the Corps of Engineers has recently completed a study of all three ports to look at sand transport across our ports, which is causing the shoaling in our entrance channel, which requires emergency dredging. And I'll be traveling up to, uh, Jacksonville District Corps of Engineers for a meeting on May third to get a full update on what the results were of that sand study and, and how we can use that information in the future to limit our dredging.
Thank you very much. Okay. J seven?
Move approval. I did that just for you, I did that just for you.
Yes.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Takari Anderson Jones, Director of Contract Compliance and Tenant Relations. I'll be presenting item J seven, agreement with Palm Beach County Vehicle For Hire Licensing. Palm Beach County Division of Consumer Affairs is charged with the regulation of the vehicle for hire industry to include limousines, sedans, taxis and non-emergent, emergency medical transportation services. Entering into this partnership with the county will eliminate duplication of regulatory efforts, assist in streamlining the permitting process and bedding of operators of the vehicle for hire program. Allowing the county to manage this process will ensure the compliance of all transportation drivers entering into the port to assist our crew's passengers. Are there any questions?
Questions, commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes.
So we're not doing this now, is that correct?
So we actually. So we actually have it in our tariff that we can do it, but we have not enforced it at this present time under the direction of the Executive Director.
And why, why the change now?
Because it really needs to be enforced. I mean, this is a liability concern with not having their proof of insurance and things like that in order to comply, make sure they're in.
So right now, it's sort of the Wild Wild West, and you want to bring it under control?
Yes.
Thank you.
One other question. As for funds, how much would this cost?
So our annual fee is $300, and for one, for one transportation company, we would provide the county with $90 of that, which is 30%, and then they would remit the remaining balance to us.
And they do all the back-of-the-house work, which is
Oh, wow.
Great for us. She did great work.
Thank you.
So I like a motion.
Call the question.
Call question.
I move approval of the agenda, item J-5.
I have heard. Our second?
Second.
We have two motions on the floor, but they're both the same.
Well, we have the same. It's okay.
She has the next one as well. Just to see.
All in favor, please say aye. Commissioners, aye. Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. Next? I am also presenting item J-8, authorization to issue a request for proposal for port real estate appraisal services. The Port of Palm Beach have upcoming lease agreements with stipulations requiring an appraisal to be completed upon exercising the renewal option. In order to minimize lead time, the port will likely to establish an approved appraiser who will perform the necessary work when engaged by the district on an asked-meet basis. The proposed advertising timeline will be adjusted slightly from what's listed in order to define a more clear scope of what we will be looking for. Deputy Director Michael Williams and I are here to answer any questions.
Move approval. Take sense.
Second? You have any questions?
No.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you very much. Good work.
Good job.
Job well done. Thank you.
Some of you might not know this, but she has been here ever since she was in high school, right? And she worked so hard, and then she went to college, and I told her, I said, "Look, the port has to help you as far as help pay your tuition." So she has been here for years and has done an outstanding job, and I commend you. Thank you. Comments from the public? I have no cars, no public comments. Let's start at the end. Commissioner Ladash, have any comments?
This was a, you know, I appreciated this meeting, it was extremely efficient, and thank you for all being so prepared and apprising us of the issues that we needed to further evaluate. Thank you.
Commissioner Richards?
Very efficient as well, I agree, and no comments, no further comments.
Commissioner Sicklin?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner?
I don't want to prolong the time, but just indulge me for a minute. There is a Transportation and Land Use Connection Panel on May 5th from noon, from 10:00 AM to noon on transit-oriented development. That's sponsored by the TPA, and May is National Bike Month. So May 3rd, Commissioner Richards, is National Bike and Road to School Day. May 7th is National Rider Bike Day, and May 15th through the 21st is Bike to Work Week. So.
What was that week for Bike to Work?
Bike to Work is May 15th through the 21st.
Okay, I just want to commend Mr. Attorney, Mr. John Fumero. You're doing an outstanding job with Teeters. You're on the job, and I really thank you for all your work. And Mr. Amer is back there hiding in the back, and I just want to thank you for coming out and for all your years of service. And Mr. Meekins, you survived your first meeting, you survived, and thank you very much for all your work. Thank you. Before, let me say our next meeting will be May, May 18th is our next meeting.
Hold on, we, I'm going to offer a motion that we all must ride our bike to the port, that's the week.
Our next meeting is May 18th, meeting adjourned.